Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Robert Lee from Fairwood Agape Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, it's good to see you, sir.
Good to be here. Let us bow. Father, we come tonight to ask you to just have your way in this meeting tonight. We pray for your peace. We pray for our leadership here in the city. Pray for all the citizens and every speaker that's going to speak tonight. We ask you to be glorified. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before you a consideration the minutes of a call meeting of August 12, 2013, a call meeting of August 13, 2013, and a regular meeting of August 13, 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will see a yellow light, and at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light. Hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Unfinished business, thirteen dash three thirty-one use permit. Item A, resolution granting the request of Dan-
Madam Clerk, if I could, real quick, I need one second, if I could, to notify the viewers at home and all of us in our audience that today is our clerk's twenty-fifth anniversary. And it would not be proper to- That's right. And I'm going to ask Dr. Edmonds if he would escort the clerk down to the front where her husband stands with some flowers. Dr. Edmonds, please. All right.
Happy to receive him.
You got me, dude.
Well, after twenty-five years of marriage, I just made thought it would be fitting that where she spends most of her time, that I would come down here and present this to you. I just want to thank you for twenty-five years of marriage, good, bad, and indifferent. And we look for fifty more, because we'll be around here for a while. But you can't have fifty more years.
Excellent.
That was nice.
All right.
You got me very much.
Very good. Yeah, that's right. Okay, Madam Clerk, you were saying?
Thank you very much. Thirteen dash three thirty-one use permit. This is going to be interesting. Item A, resolution granting the request of Dan Aston, contract purchaser of properties owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority and the Fraternal Order of Police for a use permit to construct a mixed-use building containing sixty-three residential units and approximately fifty-two hundred square feet of floor area for offices. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. UP thirteen dash oh eight, first reading vote six zero, approved. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. Item B, resolution granting the request of Gary Franks with Valkway Corporation on behalf of the McDonald's Corporation for a use permit to modify an existing drive-through window to add an additional order board lane at two thousand Victory Boulevard. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. UP thirteen dash oh nine, first reading vote six zero, approved. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero. City manager's report thirteen dash three fifty-two, adoption of an ornis accepting a four-for-life grant in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-four cents from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services and appropriating said sum in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for emergency services. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-three, adoption of an ornis accepting a grant in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said sum in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pre-trial services in the city of Portsmouth. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-four, adoption of an ornis to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen General Fund from the two thousand thirteen fourteen General Fund unassigned fund balance for disparity study regarding minority and women-owned business enterprises. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically, and we have us.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think it's important to note for the purposes of the public that this is not money coming out of the undesignated fund balance as it sounds, out of savings. This money was appropriated in March of last year for this study, and because the contract wasn't fulfilled by the end of the year, it went back into the undesignated fund balance, and now it's got to come back out to finally pay the bill. This is an accounting mechanism. This isn't taking money out of the rainy day fund, even though that's what it sounds like.
Very good. Thank you.
You're voting electronically?
Okay.
This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-five, adoption of a resolution committing thirty thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars in the funds appropriated in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Capital Improvements Fund and matching funds for a thirty thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollar grant in revenue-sharing funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards rehabilitation of the Paradise Creek Bridge. Vision principles, neighborhood, and a sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-six, adoption of a resolution committing one million dollars in funds appropriated in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Capital Improvements Fund as matching funds for a one million dollar grant in revenue-sharing funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards right-of-way clearance for the replacement of the Churchland Bridge northbound lanes. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-seven, adoption of a resolution committing seventy-seven thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars in funds appropriated in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Capital Improvements Fund as matching fund for a seventy-seven thousand three hundred eighty-one dollar grant in revenue-sharing funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards rehabilitation of the Churchland Bridge southbound lanes. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Mr. Meeks?
This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three fifty-eight, adoption of a resolution committing seven hundred eighty thousand dollars in funds appropriated in the FY two thousand thirteen fourteen Capital Improvements Fund as matching funds for a seven hundred eighty thousand dollar grant in revenue-sharing funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards the extension of Elliott Avenue. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New business thirteen dash three fifty-nine, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor, members of council. The Personnel Committee recommends the following appointments. Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission, James Jewell. Social Services Advisory Commission, Reverend Johnny Drake.
Second.
And one additional appointment, Supplemental Retirement Board, Jacqueline Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Thirteen dash three sixty, items submitted by council members.
Let me first of all start by thanking all of our citizens for coming out this weekend to some beautiful weather. We had quite a few activities in our center, which was led by our forty-third annual Seawall Art Show. We had quite a few people out. There were displays that, like we normally have, but the weather cooperated this year, and everyone I talked to, including vendors and even citizens, were extremely pleased. One of my highlights, as always, is to see anything that our students are doing. There was a student display over by the waterfront, and we had students from all over the region that I think were involved in the art competition. Ms. Barbara Vincent, I think, had a very tough task of identifying winners. I think I walked up when she was looking at a young lady from Norfolk Academy, and I said, Barbara, they're all winners. You need to cut this out. And she says, well, Mayor, give me the money, give them all first place, and I'll do it. So I left her to her task, because- But it was wonderful. And speaking of Ms. Vincent, I want to publicly congratulate her for being selected this year for the Gladstone M. Hill Friends of the Arts Award. And that is a very distinguished award that's given out each year, and I had the great opportunity to get the history lesson, because I didn't know of it, from Ms. Jean Shackelford and a couple of others that were there, and gave me the history of that and why Barbara was so deserving. So we want to say hats off to Ms. Vincent for a well-deserved honor. Secondly, we had, as always, our farmer's market that was also well-attended and had quite a few folks out, and we were trying to determine whether or not some of them were there because of the art show or because the farmer's market has become very, very popular. And again, that's always good to see. And then the other thing we had was some back-to-school rallies and community days where the Grove Church at IC Norcom on Saturday gave school supplies and had all kinds of food and games and things for about seventeen hundred children. And it is quite a scene if you go out there and see all of these kids enjoying themselves and parents, and again, the church doing the work of the church. And I also happened to go over in Prentice Park area where Centennial Baptist Church was doing the exact same thing, and they had probably a couple of hundred kids out there. And I guess the most impressive piece there was, I went into one room, and they had barbers that were volunteering, cutting all of the little boys' hair, and so that was extremely touching. I did not get to stop by Mount Calvary, Dr. Hampton's Church, but I saw moonwalks and kids as far as the eye could see. I was running late because I was to be over at the dry dock, because the IC Norcom class of nineteen fifty-five had invited me to come and speak, and I think I was about an hour and a half late, but they were there, and we had a high time there. So again, we had some very good activities, and it's always good to see our citizens participating, and it's always good to get feedback from our vendors and others that come here to do that. So this weekend was truly a blessing, and last week I was very pleased and privileged to speak at our new teacher orientation. You know, every year we have an orientation for new teachers, and for the last three years, I've been asked to come and address them and welcome them to the city, which it is my honor. And I want to thank Dr. Marie Shepherd for the program and what she puts on. But one of the things that fascinate me when I go and speak to those new teachers is I always try to poll the group of how many are returning. And we had quite a few number of returning teachers this year, and it was very interesting to mingle and talk to each one and get personal testimonies of their experiences in other school districts and why they came back here to Portsmouth, and they shared that with some of our newer teachers. And so that has always been a highlight for me. And then lastly, Ms. Gwendolyn Watkins, our principal at Parkview Elementary School, the Virginia pilot, and the current did a piece this weekend that was just, as the kids say, off the chain. This lady is a piece of work. We love her here in this city. She's been thirty years in our school system, and I believe she's been the principal at Parkview for twenty of those thirty years. And it was just refreshing to see and read a nice article about our schools and the good work that all of our school district and teachers and principals are doing as they prepare for the upcoming school year. One thing that was new to me is I read in the article that she's from Detroit, Michigan, and she attended the Detroit Public School System, and I've always thought of her as such as an angel, and I thought she was sent from heaven, because I have been invited to her school several times, and you would be amazed at the programs. And one of the most exciting for me is she has a national Honor Society, Elementary Honor Society Club there at Parkview, where they induct fourth and fifth grade students into the National Honor Society. And if you've never been there as a parent or a friend and seen that ceremony and all of the ritual-type things that go on with that and how serious Ms. Watkins takes that, and that message is passed down to all of her teachers, and she gets it. She understands it's about these kids, and she does an outstanding job with doing that. So with that, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of items also. While you were on vacation Saturday, a week ago, Vice Mayor Cherry and I attended another one of these great community back-to-school events at Dale Homes that was sponsored by the Fourth Baptist Church, and there were several hundred students there getting school supplies and backpacks and having a good time and a hot dog and a hamburger. We did not participate in the bounce house ourselves. And then we went from there to the Portsmouth Community Health Center, had a back-to-school day also, and a lot of good, healthy Portsmouth information. I also wanted to congratulate Barbara Vincent, who's a dear friend and so deserving of that Gladstone Hill Friend of the Arts Award. She won the Cultural Alliance Ally Award in 2010, which is a regional award that's very similar, and she's so well-deserving of it. You don't know Barbara, you know, she's most recently been very active in a lot of the public art that's becoming on the forefront again, and there's an adorable frog statue that sits in front of the Children's Museum, and Barbara was the one that headed up that group, that started that whole concept of public art there. On a much more serious note, before we, or about the time we meet again, on September the eleventh, which is a day in history we all never forget, an important event is going to happen for all of us in that our lawsuit that we are participating in against the Elizabeth River crossings will be heard in the Supreme Court of Virginia in Richmond. And there is a bus departing from five thousand Portsmouth Boulevard, almost the corner of City Park Avenue and Portsmouth Boulevard. At seven thirty that morning, there's an eighty-one passenger bus that has been donated to drive citizens who are interested to Richmond to sit in the Supreme Court and watch the proceedings. If you would like to make a reservation to take a complimentary ride on that bus to watch the proceedings, you can call Roger or Glenna Cornet at four six five zero zero three six, or Terry Danaher at three nine seven six three nine five, and make a reservation for your seat on that bus to Richmond. Very important day for all of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. And yeah, let's fill that bus up. That is a very important day. And before we move on to finish up on our schools, I think I've seen publications out. Noble Street Baptist Church is having a back-to-school rally. Is it this Saturday coming up? And I don't know. I'm sure there's several other churches that are doing that, but as they come in, we'll keep you posted. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thirteen dash three sixty-one, report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on August thirteenth, 2013. There were nine non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on August thirteenth, 2013, for the speakers required action by staff. Steve Whitehead was concerned about the current city code, which states that a vehicle may not park longer than forty-eight hours on a city street. Staff is currently reviewing this code and will report their findings to City Council in September 2013. Frances Jones and Regina Black were concerned about the planned location of the new Behavioral Healthcare Services, BHS, building. The location of this project has been in place since 2001. In regards to the methadone clinic, it has been a part of BHS for over thirty-one years, and it is believed to be one of the first clinics of its type in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Ms. Jones and Ms. Black also expressed concern about crime in the six-hundred block of Yorktown Avenue. Currently, there are proactive policing efforts concentrated in this area. Directed patrols will continue, and the Special Investigations Unit will continue to monitor the drug activity in the area. The police department is also planning some reverse prostitution operations to target the customers in the area as well. Kiwanis Dukett expressed and requested an update on the current Crystal Lake Drive repairs. The Public Works Department has an ongoing project to replace the pipes connecting the two crystal lakes. This project began on August first, 2013, and will be completed by mid-September, weather permitting. Damaged sidewalks, curbs, and gutters in the neighborhood were identified and replaced of, and replacement of these shall be complete, should be complete by the end of September. Also, stormwater cave-ins have been repaired. Both Public Works and Public Utilities are coordinating their repairs, and once the repairs are completed, the area will be assessed to see if new paving is warranted. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Sure, I should stay away from this subject, but is the police chief or someone, can somebody explain to me what is reverse prostitution operation? Maybe we'll pass. Somebody can brief me one-on-one. But anyway, all right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. At this time, Mr. Dennis Bagley will come forward.
All right. Here we go. This is the star of our city. This has been our MVP this week, him and his department, and by popular demand, we've asked Mr. Bagley to come up and give us the great news. Mr. Bagley, the floor is yours, sir.
Actually, Mayor, I think the citizens are the star of the show this week. They're the ones who jumped in and did this at the level that we're going to talk about. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in, open session, and share these numbers with both council and the public. After five of, five days, which is one full week of collection and one day in the second week of collection, we're five-eighths of the way through the city. And with that, we've collected, we've gone past, at this point, twenty thousand five hundred and forty-one of the thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-two cans that we deployed. And with that, ten thousand three hundred and eighty-one of those cans were on the street, and we actually collected them over that five-day period. And that results in a participation rate of fifty-one percent. That's two hundred and ninety-one thousand total pounds of recycled materials that we diverted from SIPSA. And that's well above the twenty percent that we had predicated our numbers on. So the citizens have done an extremely good job, and this is just the beginning. We still have three more days in this collection week, which will finish the cycle, and we expect those numbers to continue to grow. We've got a lot of events scheduled in the near future. One of the things that I'm excited about is we're, yours truly, has been elected to go cart diving, and what that means is we're going to go out into the neighborhoods, and I'm going to pull all of the material out of the carts, and we're going to determine how much of that material is, should have been put in the cart and maybe what shouldn't have, and educate the citizens about that. And then those folks who have done a good job, we'll give them a nice prize, and those who didn't do such a good job, we'll give them a nice prize too. So it's just an outreach program to try to educate folks.
Now, how do you select which cart you're going to dive in?
We're just going to randomly pick them.
Okay.
We've had a really good week, Mayor, and the citizens have been really encouraging for us to continue working hard to increase our participation. One other thing that I'd say, if the, we've had a lot of folks who've, carts are full, and they're saying, we need more space. If you need more space, please call three nine three eight six six three, and we'll give you additional carts. It doesn't matter, I'd like to have four or five carts at each house and zero black cans. So the more we put in the blue cans, the better off we are. I'd like to, one day, see this city where we don't wear zero waste and we have no black cans, and that's our long-term goal. So thank the citizens for all they've done and continue the good work, and I know you're a cheerleader on this project, on the Facebook page, and all the other council members are out and talking about it. So we thank everybody for their participation.
Okay, thank you. This is very good news, and again, I want to echo, we really appreciate the participation from our citizens. We've got, as you all know, we gave a presentation, about two and a half million dollars invested in this program, and at a twenty percent participation rate, we should break even in five years. So this week, so far, we're at fifty-one percent. So imagine how soon we can get those, recoup those funds and then fight over, because I think on Facebook and several hundred emails, people are asking me, what are we going to do with all that money? Well, first of all, let's pay the two and a half million dollars back, and then we'll let the fighting begin. So thank you, everyone, for participating. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a savings of about eighteen, almost nineteen thousand dollars for the viewers at home, so it was a good week for the city.
Very good. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thirteen dash three sixty-two, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Linda Ridenhour.
And as she comes up, I want to congratulate and thank you for being appointed or elected- And as she comes up, I want to congratulate and thank you for being appointed or elected by the school board to fill the vacancy for our school board member Hewitt. He has done an outstanding job, and unfortunately had to vacate his seat because of work and other commitments. And we want to thank him for all of his diligence and hard work that he's done on that board, and thank you for your willingness to step up to the plate, ma'am.
Well, I scared him.
You scared him, okay.
I was real sorry that the educational liaisons from the council wasn't able to attend the school board retreat a couple of weeks ago, but never fear, FYI, I'm going to bring you some good news and reports of success of our students. We had 923 students graduate this year. That's more than we've had in quite a few years. And 58 students earned their GED. Churchland High School now has a graduation rate of 93%. That's way above state requirement. Wilson High School, 89%, and I.C. Norcom, 79%. And by the end of this year, we feel like Norcom's going to be up what is required of them. Approximately 200 seniors finished first college at TCC, some of them with enough credits to go on to be a sophomore in a college in Virginia. About 40% of our graduates are going to technical schools, two-year college, or four-year colleges. There are 134 school divisions in the state of Virginia. This past spring, two school divisions were recognized for their enrollment increase and for their AP courses and the scores that they made. They made the state AP honor roll. Portsmouth was one of those two divisions. Final state SOL results are not out yet. They're due sometime in September. We're seeing at least 75% of all of our schools being SOL accredited. Four of them right now are too close to call, so we'll know about them in September. Two years ago, new math testing was initiated, and across the state, math scores went down, dropped. This year, our math scores have come up 16% from the previous year. Also this year, new reading tests have been employed. And the one unique thing, and weird thing for me, the students have to choose three right answers for a question. Now, that's something to get used to. We always choose an answer. They have to have three. If they don't, the question was answered incorrectly. I went to the new teachers' luncheon last week, and we have 113 new teachers coming from across the country. We had one from DOD as far away as Japan, but they really, really do seem excited about being here in Portsmouth. They took a tour of the city, and they're excited about working in the school system. They are feeling a family atmosphere and support for what they're going to do. I love living in Portsmouth, and I love people. Of course, my passion is going to always lie with advocating for excellent educational opportunities for our young people. I think if you watch carefully and see how the success of a school goes, you will see how the success of a city goes. I've been reading the biography of James Adams. It's very exciting, and it's exciting to feel the passion of our forefathers as they developed three branches of government. One quote impressed me quite a bit by John Adams, talking about the establishment of government for the people. "The purpose of those who are elected to serve is to make their people happy. The people's good is the highest law." And finally, and emphatically, I urge the widest possible support for education. Law of education for all youth, all classes of people, are so extremely wise and useful that to a humane and generous mind, no expense for this purpose should be thought extravagant." I love our forefathers. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Before you take your seat, let me just add or ask you, first of all, you mentioned the teacher from DOD from Japan. I actually spoke with her and several of the other ones that were returning, and one of the things that struck out was, they impress what our facilities, the schools, most of them didn't know of all of the upgrades and things that we've done over the last 10 years. And the testimony was some of them coming from other districts where they thought the grass was greener on the other side.
I know, yeah.
And so it really does put things in perspective when you talk to one from that vantage point as to, we all have this perception of...
They're really young, though.
Absolutely. I counted about five from old to... Hold on, let me get to my question. I was just setting it up. This SOL testing, all of the school districts throughout the state, and I think most of them throughout the country, were bracing because of those rigorous-type testing that went on this time around. And I think all of the districts dropped. I read...
Yeah, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, New Brunswick, yeah.
And so it was really sad to see on the front page of this weekend's paper what's going on over in Norfolk.
Oh, wow.
And I think the encouraging thing that I got out of that is there were two council members that stood up and said, "This is our responsibility." I didn't read any of them over there blaming each other, or teachers, administrators, the superintendent, and they're meeting actually tonight to find out how they can overcome this. And it really does put things in perspective with where we've come in Portsmouth over the last 10 years, and the effort that we've put into getting our kids where we are. But thank you very much. Dr. Edmonds has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a question, but really a comment of a positive nature, because we've been hearing so many bad things about what our school is not doing, the graduation rate is down, and all these bad entities. It is so refreshing and so gratifying to hear you speak about all the positive things that our school is doing and has done and will continue to do. In regards to graduation rate, one of two cities that you said, that got commended for...
Portsmouth AP honor roll.
AP honor roll.
State AP honor roll.
That is great.
Advanced placement for college, yeah.
That is great. So sometimes the negative seems to outweigh the good thing that's happening, and I think we accentuate that negative part too much and not the positive part enough. So I want to thank you and commend the rest of the school board, and the teachers, and staffs, paraprofessionals, cafeteria managers, bus drivers, school crossing guards. Tell them that they've done a great job.
Here, here.
And it does take all of that, and all of them are proud of what they're doing for the kids in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Okay. And one lastly, Councilwoman Randall.
Ms. Ridenhour, I'm not going to let you sit down like that. I've known you too many years during the years. For those of you who have not had the opportunity of working with her, this is truly a committed woman to education in the city of Portsmouth. And I've commended you, and I've told you that in the past, but I appreciate the fact that even though you left for a while, you never left it, because you've been out there always pushing for excellence in all of the children, because I see you around in schools, because I'm a busybody too, in the schools. But you have done a remarkable job. You've been committed to education from the first time I met you, and I'm not going to say how many years ago that was.
Thank you.
Because we are still young women. But by the same token, you keep up what you are doing, because you've been a motivational force for many of the young educators in our city who are talking about money. They aren't concerned about money now. They're looking at what can they do to have their students standing tall. And I commend you. Keep making that joyful noise, because it's going to help all of us in here, in the next generation.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brandon Watson. Mr. Mark Vidal-Gutrotzky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I stand before you tonight to request that council replace Councilmember Meeks as liaison to the school board. When I opened the Currents Sunday and saw his full-page ad, which, to me, was not a reasoned discussion of the issues facing the schools and the city, but rather the kind of attack ad that we see so often in partisan campaigns for political office. I recognize that if the city wants a liaison to help promote better understanding and open communication with its partner body, the school board, he is the wrong choice. There are so many things in his ad that I take issue with, but unfortunately, I've had about two days to evaluate it and begin researching all the things that are factually inaccurate. And I don't want to speak from memory, because, as I've told you before, mine is no longer as good as I used to think it was. However, I have done some rooting around. I've looked at the CAFERS that are online. There are only four of them at this point in time that are still there. I have documents in my records, but it would take me some time to lay hands on them because of my random access filing system that drives my wife crazy. However, I believe a significant portion of what he asserted, based on my participation in council meetings and work sessions having to do with the budget, would be shown to be misstatements or half-truths. And this really aggravates me, because responsible public officials have a right to raise their concerns and to document them. But to throw out allegations that are not based in fact, that pander to a particular point of view of a segment of the community, and which ultimately operate to the detriment of the schools, which are the way forward for those of us of modest means, I think it's scurrilous. I think it is bad for the community, and I think it's utterly irresponsible. At any rate, I will be doing some more research so I can give you hard facts to counter the misstatements that I have found, but this will take a bit of time. And so in the meantime, I ask you to consider my request to replace Mr. Meeks with somebody who works well with others and can present a more reasoned approach, a more rational approach, to serving as councils, as one of council spokespeople in regard to school board and school system issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let me say, Mr. Gutrotzky, that I thought, and then I mentioned earlier about the article that was in this weekend's paper, it was actually two in that it was disturbing, not only the situation that the Norfolk school system is finding themselves in, facility-wise, instructional-wise, but what I thought was leadership on the council members that were quoted in the paper, and their willingness to want to make sure that they all work together to try to do a best fit. And one of the, I think, enlightening comments I saw was Councilman Smigle, who I think is an assistant principal at Morrie High School, went down this road of quoting about comparing urban schools like Norfolk to a Virginia Beach or Chesapeake, and you can't do that. And I thought it shed a whole different perspective on how that council is not throwing stones and trying to figure out what they need to do to fix that. And I think they know. I think we all know. It's funding, it's cooperation, it's working with both bodies to make sure that the end user, and in this case, is our kids and our future, get what they deserve, and they all get access to the American dream. So I thought that was fitting. The other disturbing piece was the sequestration and some of the things and hits that would look like were going to occur in the Head Start program, and I think there was orientation here last week, and they did a piece on some of the schools and kids that may not get access in Portsmouth and some of the school districts like ours. So thank you for your comments, sir.
Yes, sir. If I may comment on one part of that. Research has shown that giving students early access to educational enrichment improves their performance all the way through their educational careers. And brain development is such that children who are educationally deprived early on have a very difficult time making up that difference. So this is really hurting our children at the worst possible moment.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Steve Carroll.
Evening, Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Steve Carroll, 3112 Riveridge Drive. I have some documents that show that as far back as 2007, and probably further back than that, SCANSA partners and FLOAR partners were actively pursuing the third Cranny Island Crossing. And both groups promised to have that facility online by 2013. And I'll make this point now, because I want you to remember it. This and other documents prove that the main emphasis, impetus of the HRTA and the transportation bill is to facilitate the ports, has very little to do with congestion relief. This transportation bill is virtually a mirror image of HRTA, and the Midtown Tunnel was part of that project. And a couple of questions need to be answered that nobody seems to have thrown out. How did an $800 million Elizabeth River Tunnel grow to $2.2 billion over a five- or six-year period? I'm not a betting man, but I'm going to bet, based on SCANSA's pursuit of all these other projects, I don't think they've got anything to worry about having competing tolls on the rest of the projects. Now, Mayor, there was a lot of ruckus made over a letter that you sent to Ray LaHood. I don't see a problem with that letter. The letter I have a problem with is the one you sent before that, to Sean Connaughton, a month earlier, dated January 20, 2011. "We understand the importance of ongoing commercial negotiations and do not believe that adding a number member to the party," and I'm paraphrasing, "is a prudent approach to negotiations. We view VDOT as the responsible agent for understanding and implementing the projects in a way that both respects economic and community development." These are the same people that are shafting us with the tolls. I don't know where you get that from. I'm a little bit confused. And it's the date of the letter that's concerning. That's, what, two years ago, two and a half, almost three years ago? Now, the failure of Sean Connaughton to volunteer to come to this city and explain the tolls to us is inexcusable. It's the height of cowardice. And yet, Mayor, no less than three times, I pleaded with you before ERC was signed to summon Sean Connaughton to this city to an open-mic forum... summon Sean Connaughton to this city to an open-mic forum and answer questions to the public, and you didn't say a word. Not a word. Why? And come to me, think of it, nobody else in the city council even followed up on the suggestion. Fine, tell me I'm wrong. I have a minutes from the Gint Civic League of April 21, 2009. I'm going to quote, "Comment from Count Doug Smith, Portsmouth City Council Member and Member of Metro Planning Committee. Proposed toll is $2 to $3. Independent review panel is still meeting. All that exists right now is a conceptual proposal." This article dated 3/27/2012, and I'm going to quote, "In 2009, there were five independent review panel meetings, and all open and advertised to the public. Meetings were held in Norfolk and Portsmouth City Council chambers. Both city managers were voting members of the panel and approved the project with tolls of $2.86." Somebody needs to explain that. Lucy's got a lot of explaining to do to Ricky. What's the explanation? Who had a rein on the city manager? Where did Councilman Doug Smith get his information, and who did he give it to? That's too close for comfort. And I have one last question. Before the departure of former city manager Kenneth Chandler, did he sign a confidentiality agreement with the city before he departed? Yes or no? It's a simple yes or no question. I'm not asking for the details. Did he or didn't he? Am I going to get an answer to that question?
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Let the record show that I didn't get an answer.
We will most certainly do that. But I will allow you to respond to my comment. As Mayor Holly would always say, to put those things and what you just said in proper perspective. When I was elected in November, we gave the Secretary of Transportation and VDOT until January. And when the manager and the staff comes to me and tell me that we haven't had any correspondence or any communication with them about our roads, about what's going on, is when in January, after I was elected, that I sent that letter. And that letter was for to get a response. I did not get a response. And after about two months or three months, which is the second letter you see, is when I personally drove to Richmond to find out who up there had the nerve to not to respond to the mayor of the impacting city. And I went up into a meeting that was set up by the senator to get me an answer, okay? And I was told then, like everybody else was told, because of the PPTA and because of the steps in each part of that, and because of the confidentiality and the negotiations, everything was private, the financing was private, this whole methodology just kept going all the way till when we hit the wall. So, I just got here in November and inquired. So, for other members of this council, you mentioned Doug Smith and some of the others, they could have very well have been given the same answers. I looked in the records, and all, even on the independent review panel, everyone I talked to said the financing piece was always not available, and most of their approvals were done on the condition, it was a conditional approval, as to what this financing piece was going to be. So, from what I got in my short term in office from November to January in writing that letter, I can't answer what Ms. Simmons or some of the other council members that were here, but that was the type of response I got. And instead of making a big mess out of it, I actually drove to Richmond and met with them to ask, why can't I get an answer? I can't have a staff, a manager, and the folks here and all of this talk going on about something going on. And then I'm getting calls from people in the neighborhoods that were affected, saying there's old ladies, that there's somebody on my door telling me they want to buy my house because of the new tunnel. And some other folks saying, I'm hearing they're going to move my house. And I'm like, who's talking to these people? And so, I confronted the corporation and the secretary about what's going on and how I didn't appreciate that in our city. So, that's the context of those, and I'll allow you, like I did to others when I commented, a response, and then we'll move on.
And you were not elected mayor till what, May 2010?
That's exactly right.
Understood. Just the same.
November.
Excuse me. I stand corrected. Just the same. Who had a handle on this city manager, and who was he reporting to? And again, I'll ask the same question. With all the controversy, with all the complaints that we were getting about lack of information coming from these meetings through VDOT, and he should have been the one here telling us this publicly himself, not sending his lackeys down here spewing some kind of public relations garbage to our people. I'll ask you again, Mayor, what better way to get firsthand information and put pressure on Sean Connaughton than to have him come to a public forum and force him to address us? And you didn't respond, you didn't say a word. And let me add one more thing. If you recall, I spent hours back last April of 2012, and I told this city council, and I did the calculations, that we were going to fork out over $28 billion for a $2.2 billion project. I literally fell out of my chair when I came to those numbers, and I spent hours refiguring them. I took those figures and I sent them to a gentleman in Norfolk who was a former comptroller for the Air Force. He sent them to his son, who is a professor of economics at Massachusetts Institute of Technology, and he agreed with me. I probably way underestimated the money that we are going to hemorrhage because of this project. Why didn't we summon Sean Connaughton to this city and force him to explain this contract? Why?
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Good night. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Ursula Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. All too often, you know, citizens come before you guys to complain or share their angst concerning whatever situation is causing them distress. Rarely, well, with the exception of Ms. Ridenhour, do we come and tell you some good news. So, tonight, I'm here to tell you some good news for a change. I had the opportunity Thursday night to attend the regional law enforcement awards ceremony, which was hosted by MADD and the Southeastern ASAP. And two of Portsmouth's officers were recognized and honored at that dinner, and I just wanted to share it with the city council and with the citizens of Portsmouth. The first place went to Officer Christopher Matherson, who had 18 DUIs last year. He has been employed with the police department since November of 2007. In addition to the plaque that was presented to him, he was also presented with an engraved pen and pencil set for being first place two years in a row. I think that's pretty awesome.
Absolutely.
Second place went to Officer Stephen Cragan with eight DUI arrests. He has been with the Portsmouth Police Department since September 2011, and he too was presented a plaque to honor his achievements. I'd like to congratulate Officers Matherson and Cragan. Their heroic efforts to combat drinking and driving are truly appreciated, and I want to thank them for making the streets of Portsmouth safer for all of us. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you for your service. Absolutely. And congratulations to both of those officers. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Avarel Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, and citizens of Portsmouth. I'm Avarel Johnson with Wilson Ward Civic League. I need to correct you, Mayor. The Baptist School this weekend will be hosted at Nova Street Baptist Church in conjunction with the Wilson Ward Civic League, who is doing it.
Thank you.
I'm here to kind of clear up some things that were said at the last council meeting, and I'm going to start with Mr. Moody. Thank you for your concern and your effort in going out and meeting with Reverend Jones. What you all did or trying to do is, in my own personal opinion, is a good thing, but it's a bad thing as well. I'm not going to stop talking about the recreation center. I'm going to tell you that right up front. You're going to hear it from me every now and again. I understand what you're trying to do, but we've been doing that already anyway. My concern with that, what you was telling us about last week, Mr. Moody, is good for the neighborhood, but that church cannot house that neighborhood, and it's not just that one neighborhood that we are talking about. It's a lot of neighborhoods that we are talking about. It's a good thing, and I'm glad that you all are on board about it and with us for that, but it's not going to solve the problem because it's not just a recreation center that we want. We want a multicultural center. That way, everybody, and I do mean everybody, every nationality, every religion, and everything, by you all trying to house us in one church, in my opinion, you're closing the door on other churches, other denominations. You've got some denominations that will not cross the door seal of a church. So, that's a problem for me and for a whole lot of other folks as well. I do applaud your efforts, and I thank you for trying to work with us, and I'm going to keep thanking you for working with us. I agree with some of what you said, not all of it. To Ms. Simmons, I was kind of appalled by your response because of what you said and how you said it, but we're going to forget that too. But I think, as a councilperson, an elected councilperson, for you to tell me in this city that you don't care about something, that's kind of, that's kind of deep. It's really deep, and it's hurtful. It is really hurtful. Just like I'm entitled to my opinion, you are too, and that's yours. I just don't like it. And to the rest of the city council, we're not through. We will be back. We will fight. I don't care if it's 40 years old, because it took 45 years for us to get current where we are. So, the fight is not over. It's just begun. If you don't believe me, just watch how we work. In the meantime, y'all have a wonderfully blessed week, and I hope to see all of you, just like I saw you the last time, this Saturday, Nova Street. 10 to 2. Thank you.
Let me, Ms. Johnson, I agree with the partnership with the church.
I do too.
Three years ago, when I was elected, one of the first things I did was took the city manager out there because we saw the need, and we've heard that drumbeat for years about the lack of facilities out there and the condition that the facilities were in. So, the city manager and I went to that church, and we also went to some other areas, looking at what we could do as a interim until we addressed this issue of community centers, swimming pools, and all of those types of things. So, none of that is new. It is an opportunity for a partnership. It does create some potential problems, but when you don't have anything, I think the effort that we should have taken three years ago when I brought this up would have showed a good faith that we were trying to do something in the best interest of the city and the citizens until we did come up with a long-range solution. And so, that was not done. But I do applaud their effort for trying to look at that. Because it is something, and our children need something. And until we put in a plan and be able to do the things to address all of those kids and all of those neighborhoods, we're going to continue to be at each other's throats and having different views on how we have these dropout rates and graduation rate problems and crime rates and all of those other things. In my view, all of this is connected, and I think we all know that. And so, thank you for your comments. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Just to clarify, I didn't say I didn't care about Truxton. What I said was, I didn't know there was a 1979 plan because in 1979, I was 21 years old and a senior in college. And when I was living in Richmond as a senior in college, I didn't care anything about what was going on here. I didn't even live here. But in 20, what I said was, but in 2010, I did care when I championed a recreation plan for the city. I didn't say I didn't care about Truxton. I said in '79, I didn't even know where it was. That doesn't mean, as an elected official, I don't care about Truxton. Please don't misconstrue that.
I did not, Ms. Simmons.
I was trying to be clever, and obviously, it failed.
I did not misconstrue. You didn't mention Truxton. You just simply said you did not care. That is what I heard. So, thank you.
I was a college student.
Hold on. Mr. Moody, do you need Ms. Johnson?
No. Really, no need for Ms. Johnson to come back.
Oh, okay. You can take your seat.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson, every worthy cause, I think, needs a drum major, and you certainly have stepped forward to be the drum major for recreation in our city. I think everybody up here realizes that we need more of it. The solution that the mayor is talking about was actually offered in a almost $78,000 study, or almost $70,000 study that council was presented in 2012. And while we don't necessarily have to follow that by a T, it made some valid recommendations. And number one on the list was, let's fix what we have. With that said, we're doing a disservice to you, disservice to the kids, by you having to come here each month and us all saying, oh, we love recreation, but we haven't made any decision. The wrong decision is no decision. So, you know, council operates by consensus. We all have the same study. We've certainly heard from yourself and from others on what is needed. Most of us who've lived here any length of time are pretty much aware of our tremendous lackings in the field of recreation as compared to some of our other cities. With that said, it does have to be balanced by affordability, but the bottom line stops with council. We have a report, just like a lot of reports that we have. Right now, it's gathering dust. I challenge staff to come back with a plan to council that we can set here and vote on. That's what we do, make decisions. And come back with a plan on us implementing parts of that study, none of the study, or a new roadmap. That's what you expect. That way, you don't have to spend your Tuesday nights coming and talking about recreation. We need to make a decision. You know, people give you lip service when you come here, but we know what's needed. We find ways to do other things with the dollar. So, let's fix what we have, and let's do a plan. If you can't afford it all at once, do what a lot of us do when we buy something. Tackle it one bite or $1.00 at a time.
I hear you. Loud and clear, I do. So, if you're going to do another study.
No.
And another plan.
No.
And you're going to spend some more money on that there, stuff like that. I suggest you use some of those funds and build us some kind of recreation somewhere in there, you know? Brenner's Park have nothing.
Believe me.
Just spend some of that money.
I'm not a advocate of additional studies. My point is that we have one.
Before you plan another one, though, think about the recreation.
Let's try to implement some or all of the study that we have.
Okay. Can we all work together? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Ms. Regina Black.
Good evening, everybody. And congratulations, Debra. Remember, we used to write, type my weed letters for me. It's been a very, very long time. Congratulations. My name is Regina Black, and I reside at 512 Yorktown Avenue.
Yes.
I have prepared some packages for you so that I can have you to better understand about the methadone clinic that they plan to place across the street from my home. And I don't believe that you, some things sound very good on paper, but the actuality of it is, it is a safety issue for our children. And if we turn to the first page I have, I have designated where the first school bus stop is. That's at the corner of County and Yorktown. That big square I have, that's that lot they speak of. And right across from there, I walked there, and it's approximately 28 feet from that corner there. So, they're going to put that methadone right here at the bus stops for our elementary school students. There is another bus stop here. There is another bus stop here. If you turn the next page, it is located on the corner of Yorktown and King Street. That lot, I put the X, that's that lot. And our elementary skits go there, and their parents do not accompany them. They are there early in the morning. And I also have, if you turn the next page, this is that same lot that I marked the X at that goes across to I.C. Norcom High School. Now, I walked there, that's 137 feet approximately. And we have walkers that go to I.C. Norcom High School. On the backside of, if we don't have a picture, but there is the oasis, and we have people with their children who walk there to get fed, and they walk through this area here. So like I said, on paper, it may have sounded good in 2002, but the actuality of it, that's why I believe that I.C. Norcom has these drug-free area signs here. If you see their poster. And that's why I believe that's the reason for the code section in Virginia, 18.2255.2, is to protect our children. It said, "From this type of thing, that it shall be unlawful for any person to manufacture, sell, or distribute, or possess with intent to sell, give, or distribute any controlled substance, imitation-controlled substance, or marijuana within 1,000 feet of school property." That's why I believe they put that sign there at Norcom, is to protect our children. And I also believe that it's, it is the intent of this law here that within 1,000 feet of, of a designated school bus stop, it is to protect our children. And even though this methadone clinic would be authorized distribution, it's, it comes under the category, "Just because you can, don't mean you should." And I am very concerned about the children who will be standing out there in the morning. I'm very concerned about the kids that go to I.C. Norcom High School. So that when this was thought of, that, you know, I understand that we do need it, but it doesn't belong there. I understand that people have those issues, but the element that come with those issues, and if you ever known anybody who's, who's addicted to those opiates, they actually steal now really bad. And I talked to the owner of a store called the Army-Navy Store. He's been there since 1970. And I told him about this yesterday. He is very, very unpleased. He's been here about 43 years. Why in the world we run a person who's been in this city doing business away from here with their idea? Because it goes in the back, right in the back of his door where he gets supplies and everything. And I told, he didn't know that, because he doesn't live in the city, but he's been there for 43 years. And I've been walking around the city, and nobody seems to have known about this, they were going to put that there. And I believe it's more important than shrubs and how they're going to make the architecture look like the social services. Our children, we are, their guardian is here. And it's, it's bad enough that some of those little people are out there unprotected with no parents, it's bad enough that they're at that bus stop early in the morning. But I believe that is why that code section in the Code of Virginia was written as to protect our children. We can't be a part of putting our children in harm's way. I do believe that it is needed, but however, that's the wrong place to put that there. It doesn't belong there.
Okay. Ms. Black, I want to thank you for your, your presentation and your dedication, it is.
Thank you.
I wasn't here last meeting, and I saw it on video, and your comments, as well as the other ladies' comments, and it is some concern there. I mean, I think we take pride in, in, in how well this lab has been and where it's located now. It's probably not in an area that's that close proximity to, to residents or children and bus stops and things of that nature. I'm not aware of how and how long the plan's been going on and how long that's been in there. So I want to thank you for your comments here. This is a concern. And the homeless piece is right across the street, the oasis.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the back on Williamsburg.
Right.
It's on the back, but all the traffic comes right through there to get to there. And if you come out there, you will see that it's only like, we're four houses on the front of Yorktown. And, but that corner right there is a very, very busy corner. And that, and to bring that element to our children, they already having a hard enough time as it is. And we want to make sure that they reach their full potential and not be stopped because of some decision that doesn't have to be there. But it, it is needed, however, it doesn't belong there.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Edmonds had a question?
Yes. Ms. Black, hi, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Just for some clarity's sake, has the methadone clinic, since it's been there, have the people, I know it's not a lot of people that go there at one time, but are they causing the ruckus, those pe, those particular?
Well, it's not, it's down, it's, the methadone clinic is down on Washington Street now.
It's on Washington.
I don't live on Washington Street, but I know when they come in the morning. See, they're, they're planning to build it there. It's not there. It doesn't exist there on Yorktown yet. They're going to construct the building there. I'm just saying, it's now on Washington Street, if I'm not mistaken. And they do come early in the morning, and they do wait out there early in the morning. And I'm concerned when those kids out there early in the morning, when they're out there early in the morning, as well.
Okay.
You, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
They, they have to wait, but it's on Washington Street. Now, it's been there for.
Right, it's on Washington Street.
Sometimes.
But you're concerned about something that's going to hap, going to happen.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And you're afraid that it's going to bring in some?
I'm concerned about being proactive and being for our children and not after the fact. I'm, I'm concerned about being safe and not sorry. I'm concerned about that these little, the children are struggling as it is, and we should not be putting stumbling blocks in their way or any kind, because do you know something? We don't even know the population that serve there. Some of them may be in the criminal justice system. We have no idea of knowing that. Some of them may have been, you know, in and out of that system and still may have charges. We have no idea. We don't know that. And I'm concerned that we're going to put our children in, make them a prey to that, is what I'm saying to you.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you think there's any way possible, maybe Mr. Parks can look into this and, and just kind of get a grip or a hand on what possibilities might be, or, or what the situation would entail by them moving in that direction with methadone in the area where she is?
Well, sure. Bill is going to retire at the end of this month, and we have the new director here, Gracie Taylor. And I'm going to ask Gracie to speak with you and invite you to go to the existing methadone clinic. I think there's been a lot of rhetoric stated in the last two minute, meetings, and not all of, all of it is factual. And I think education is a, is a good, good thing for us to all have. And so I request you to take that tour. As you go back to your seat, Ms. Taylor will approach you and, and set up a tour of the current clinic so that we can have an understanding of exactly the type of treatment that we give our brothers and sisters. We're, we're talking about as if these people are on the margins of life, and that's not true. That is not true.
Have you ever talked to drug addicts or people who used to be on drugs and what they do?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I talked to them, and they told me it doesn't belong there.
I spent my life doing that.
It doesn't belong there. They've told me it doesn't belong there. And if you don't live there, I'm sure, Mr. Rowe, but I live there, and it doesn't belong there. Oh, no. Oh, no. It doesn't belong there.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Let me just ask real quick, looking at this code here that she has, this thing is within this 1,000-foot, are we in violation here, or are we aware of this?
Read the bottom.
Read the last line.
Yes, as it doesn't.
Violation of section shall constitute a separation.
It prohibits authorized distribution is what it says, but however, just because you can, don't mean you should. That's why that law was written, because to protect our children, and we should keep that barrier of protection.
I understand.
That's not 1,000 feet. That's two, that's 100, that's 28 feet across the street. We should protect our children with that barrier because when children, you know, people send their kids out to go to school, to walk to school, they, they're not thinking about what that kind of thing happening to them, them being accosted and people trying to do all sorts of things to them. They just thinking that kid's going to get to school and, you know, high life, they're not, anything will happen to their kids.
Thank you, ma'am, verbally.
Thank you very much. You all be blessed.
I'm sorry, Ms. Randall?
Ah, yes. I talked with you, I think on the telephone that you called. Someone from your neighborhood had called.
Oh, okay.
Had talked with them. And I understand your concern. You have to live near a situation.
To know it.
There to know that it exists. And a potential danger to the welfare of a child.
Mm-hmm.
I don't care if it's two blocks away, it's a danger. And so I, I think it's something that you do need to look into and get some clarification because the children are our future.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we can't protect them and take care of them.
Yes, ma'am.
And show them the light while they're little, it's no need of trying to conquer it once they get older.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I commend you all for being so resourceful and looking toward the future because those children are our future, and I know where you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
So follow through and pursue, and see if you can get some answers to it because I see the little children.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm concerned also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Meeks?
And Ms. Black? Thank you, Mayor. Have you seen the police presence more since you came in last? You worry about the prostitutes and the drugs and the.
Well, it's just a matter of fact on Yorktown Avenue. The man at the, the man at the owner, Mr. Irwin, he know more about what going in the cut than I knew what going on in the cut when I went to talk to him. He's the owner of the Army-Navy Store.
Right.
And he knew about what, he appreciated me telling him what was happening, that they was going to put that behind his building. He knew about what you can buy and something you don't want to buy. He knew more about what going on than I do. And I, you know, I lived there. He lives in another city, he said, but we see, you know, it's kind of like they do a lot of drive-bys or whatever, and some, they've been, it's just, we have people, so whatever it is that's going on down there, they come in from Kentucky to get it. That's what I'm just going to tell you. They come in from Kentucky to get it.
But have you seen more police presence since?
Well, they don't sit out there and sit, you know, do any surveillances and stuff. The car might ride through a couple of times and just ride through like you're going from County Street, because it's a thoroughfare from County Street to High Street. So a lot of people do the cut-through from County to High. It's like a little cut-through at a thoroughfare. And they're not sitting out, they're not, they just, sometimes you can see them ride by and wave at you, but, you know, it's another group that, when they move that group out, it's another group that set up shop. And that's why if you put that there, it's also, to me, a temptation to the people who are trying to get off of. You go right across the street to the drug deal. I mean, I don't understand the purpose of that because that is a really, the, the whole alleyway up there has just got a lot going on, and I just, our children do not really need to be around any of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very well done.
Our next speaker, our next and final speaker is Ms. Frances Jones.
Here's a proposed site.
Excuse me. My daughter. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilman. I am, I'm really elated to be here. Why? Because I have a purpose. You know, as I sit and I listen, and I'm going, some of this, I don't believe my ear. I live at 600 Yorktown Avenue. I live where you are going to put that clinic. I live there. When I left this meeting last two Tuesdays ago, Ms. Black drove me home. My car was in the driveway, in my driveway. When I went to open the door, which was locked, I noticed that my glove compartment was opened. I got in it, I drove back, I says, I look in the backseat, I says, there's something different about this car. Did I leave, did, did I do that? So I backed out. She made sure I got home safe, but there was a car policing the area. I drove the car to York, to King and James. I parked the car, instantly got out. I checked the back of the car to make sure that no one was in the car with me. The rain was coming down. I went to pick up my son, and when I came back, when I turned into my driveway, I, before I got into my driveway, I stopped. There was my bowling ball that was in my car along with my bowling bag and my shoes thrown underneath the shrubbery by my home. Now, this is where you great people want to put that clinic. Someone had went into my car and took my bowling ball out of there, violated my space. It ain't violates your space. When you got in your car last Tuesday, did anyone was in your car? Did anyone violate you? But yet, you're going to put and tell me, Mr. Rowe, you're the city manager, you're pleased with it, you can show her how it is. But let me tell you, I want you to live there. I want you to put it in front of your house. I want you, every day when you walk, you have to lock your gate now. You have to lock it up because you, you, you don't know what's going on. You got people walking back and forth like they're out of their mind. They have a, 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 a building around the corner called Safe Haven. Well, it's not Safe Haven for me, it's Hell Haven because I have to deal with those people every day. And guess what? That center not even there yet. That's what I deal with. I have to lock my front gate after the mailman leaves. Yeah, I see prostitutes walking back and forth. If I'd known it was going to be that way, I would have never moved into Portsmouth because I wanted to be close to my work and I wanted to support the city that I live in, that my job is in, because I work for the Naval Medical Center. I shook for it twice because this is what I'm getting. I'm getting nowhere. But I am getting somewhere. You know why? Because I have a God up above that is able to change the king's heart. I have a God up above that is able to change your heart. I have the God up above that can save those uncircumcised even that violated my space. And I don't like it, and I'm not going to sit down and take it calmly. Why? Because my safety. When I go to work in the morning time, there this guy cutting through. I checked the street to make sure I was safe, and all of a sudden, there he was. I will not be a statistic in the city of Portsmouth. I will not sit back and allow it to happen, Mr. Rowe. You can show the lab, but I want you to dream about it. I want you to visualize it in your head, what I go through. I didn't used to lock my back gate when I went to work, but since they violated my space. Now, how would you like to live like that? But yet, more of these elements going to bring in? Huh. Like I told the mayor, you saw the video, I suggest your panel member put it in front of their house, and I still do that. I have no shame. Then you'll feel my hurt. You'll feel my pain. And the police department? Yeah, the officer came up the next day. I did a report on it. That car stopped my house. It sat there. When I called the police department, then I got a letter from the great police department in Portsmouth. Tell me, oh, we did the investigation. How are you going to get an investigation when you didn't do any evidence? You didn't, you didn't, you didn't dust my car. Answer me, please. I want an answer.
Ms. Johnson, let me ask you, the Safe Haven Homes, where are they located?
Safe Haven is the corner of Yorktown and High. A change. No, J-Town is High. There's, it's around.
And that's a block away?
Yes. And they cut through the neighbor, cut through the neighbor. I, like I said, before these guys was committed to the neighborhood, they weren't always there. See, I support the oasis. I've been supporting the oasis ever since I moved here from New York. I supported them at the Naval Medical Center. We support them with food and et cetera, and I, and I support them, which I know that people fall hard, hard times, and I understand that. You know, I understand that these people need, need help. I understand that. But I'm looking, but what I don't understand is the idea of putting something where we already stressed out. already stressed out, and prostitutes here, they come and goes. I mean, they're in front of your house, you know, you, it's just above and beyond.
So let me get this straight, on where we're proposing to put that meth lab and where you live...
Right in front of my house.
On one block...
No, no, in front of my house. Right in front of my house. When I look out the door...
Ms. Jones, I need you to...
Yes, sir.
Yield to the chair.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Where are that potential sites for that building? In one block, you've got a Safe Haven home...
Uh-huh.
Oasis.
And on the opposite side, you've got an oasis, and then on the front side of it, you have I.C. Norcom High School...
Yes, sir.